Hey Chief.
Hi, sir.
Before we go live, any update on Stevens Court with all the eggs and the stuff back before Christmas is getting thrown at houses?
Nothing yet, but it seems to have stopped very quickly. I know it had happened in Carpenter'sville. There were a couple of houses that had similar incidents with houses and cars being egged. And the neighboring subdivision in West Dundee, they seem to be running back and forth and the mayor had said that his house had gotten touched with a couple of tomatoes and a couple of eggs.
I'm on Stevens and the house to the right of me has a small fence that backs up to Carrington. But you know, we've always had, was always, all our backdoor lights have all been on all the time. But it was nice to see, you know, the squads were sitting out in front of the house, you know, two, three nights in a row, which was nice to see. So thank you.
Oh, no problem. I know one, they hit one of the squad cars and one of the officers took off after. Almost, they were a little, that's how we knew they were younger. He almost caught them, but they were a little too spry for him and jumping over, jumping over some of the culverts and everything, but no damage to the car or anything, but it just seemed like they got annoyed with a few people, not only in Sleepy Hollow, but West Dundee and Carpenter'sville too. They left a couple of coconuts for people on their front, on their front door, so.
What if that has any meaning?
I have no idea.
I have to admit, I grew up in Philadelphia, suburban Philadelphia, and the night before Halloween was called mischief night. And, and we lit a bag of poop on my neighbors, rang the bell, and we had a gigantic blue spruce tree on our front lawn. My cousin and I are literally shivering under the blue spruce tree because I could hear my mother screaming, where are we? As we're watching the neighbor come out and stamp out the fire.
No, it was, I grew up in Brookfield out in the southwest burbs here. If you didn't give good candy, usually you got met with a couple of eggs and they smashed your pumpkin. So a lot of the people up here were upset and understandably so, especially now it's not nice to be peeling, trying to get scrape eggs off. When it's 20 degrees outside, but we, us and West Dundee was very good. We kind of teamed up with them just because they were so close and where they were, everything was occurring. They had a couple of officers in an unmarked car sitting up and driving around and sitting in some driveways up in Carrington up there. So hoping to see if maybe they saw someone run past or run through the yards. If they could grab them, but haven't seen anyone or knock on wood or heard anything in the last several days.
Yeah, it's been quiet since, you know, four or five days, yeah.
Were any of them wearing headphones?
No, not that I know, no masks either. But it seemed like it happened last year around Christmas break too. Because we had another, we had a car, I think he put about two dozen eggs on his car and that stuff was frozen on there. And then driving around that night, you could see, they didn't throw it in the driveways around the houses. It was like right before the driveways in the street, there were some eggs and every block or so you'd see a empty egg carton. But they didn't hit any houses and they only hit that one car and the rest they would just throw it like in front of the house. Like two eggs and then drive away.
Yeah, I didn't have a beard then, Ed.
Hey Steve. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening. Kyle, I keep waving to you every time you drive by the house with the, the big red truck, but you don't see me.
No, I can't see you.
So I'll have to say that Dylan's come by twice when I've been out shoveling my driveway and he always has a smile on his face and he always waves to everybody.
Well, that's good. Public relations.
It is very good.
Maybe I need to move.
7:20 saying he joined.
Or is it too much coffee?
Steal them from the police department.
Please, I have to give you credit. Our police, the last couple of years have been so happy because I don't, I can't imagine all of them recognize me, but every time one comes by, they're always waving when they come by, which is great, so.
We aim to please.
As long as they're not waving handcuffs, Joe.
Chief, just while we're waiting, I think we have a second. I keep getting texts from another community. It's from something called Everbridge Nexil. And it's like emergency, like boil water orders, weather alerts, other, is that something that's paid or is it a free service or do we?
I'm not aware that, I'm not aware that we have that.
Yeah, I mean.
Pardon?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Usually that's a pay service. I work for, part-time for University of Chicago Hospital and that's our, we have the same emergency notification system. And that's why we send out any alerts or anything like that. Pardon?
Okay, yeah, no, and that's why I wasn't sure how much it costs for it to pay because it's been, it's really handy, so.
Oh, there's a bunch of different ones out there that we could look into too for anything, traffic alerts, lane closure, you know, street closures, community alerts.
All right, it's 7:30 in the evening, January 4th, 2021. We have determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent under the current COVID-19 pandemic. Therefore, according to state's emergency declarations, we can't have a Zoom or a remote meeting. As long as one member of the public body is in the building, I am physically present here at the building along with trustee Merkel. So we have got that covered. I will go through the, those attending remotely and verify that you can hear us. Mr. Carino.
Yes, I can hear you.
Mr. Harney.
I can hear you.
Mr. Deatley.
Yes, I can hear you.
Mr. Nemec.
Yes, three by three.
Mr. Schuster. Lost Mr. Schuster. Mr. Killinger.
Yes, I can hear you.
Mr. Klepeck.
Here, yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I can hear you and see you. So we've got communication, therefore we've got a meeting. I will call the meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, bear with me folks because I'm going to be running Tony's position as well as mine this evening. So I'm going to do the roll call. Mr. Deatley.
Here.
Mr. Harney.
Here.
Mr. Nemec.
Here.
Mr. Merkel.
Here.
Mr. Perrino.
Here.
Mr. Zimba. Mr. Zimba is absent. Everyone else is present, either in person or remote. We've got a meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of December 21st, 2020. Do we have a motion to so moved, approved?
Nemec, so moved?
Moved by Nemec, seconded by Merkel. Any additions or corrections?
I have just a couple corrections. In the introductory paragraph, it doesn't mention that trustee Zimba and I were present, we were present.
Okay.
And in the adjournment, it doesn't show us voting on it, but I think we both voted to adjourn, so. Nothing too important.
All right. With those additions, nothing else to be changed? Roll call, please. Mr. Deatley.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
Aye.
Mr. Nemec.
Aye.
Mr. Perrino.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the minutes so pass. Okay. The next item is the president's report. And basically, the coronavirus thing is, phones has been depleted. Over the past week, John Florence and I have been busy obtaining the last items that we needed to put up the video here in the conference room and the boardroom and get that stuff going. So we ordered it Friday or Thursday, the 31st, and will be delivered sometime this week. And then we'll start putting the equipment together here in the boardroom and go from there. So that is pretty much it on coronavirus update and the president's report, clerk's report. The clerk is not with us this evening. Planning zoning, no report. Attorney's report, Mr. Schuster. Mark, you're on mute.
Here we go. Thank you, Mr. Florence, for getting me into the meeting. I have no report, Mr. President, although I'm sure I'll have some comment about item 12B when we get to it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Engineers report. We don't have the engineer with us this evening. Finance, we've got the accounts payables. We have a motion to approve the accounts payables and the amount, go ahead. Motion to approve the accounts payables?
So moved, Deatley.
Second, Harney.
Moved, Deatley, seconded, and Harney to approve the warrants for December, or for January 4th, 2021 in the amount of $89,492.40. Are there any additions, deletions, comments, or questions? There being none, roll call. Mr. Deatley.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Nemec.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel. Mr. Perrino.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, the motion so passes. Okay. Public comments, we have anyone from the public for comments this evening? We received none, no emails or notices? Okay. Move on into the trustees reports, roads and parks, Mr. Harney.
I met briefly with Kyle today. And I've asked Kyle, just to recap, where we are with the road conditions, assault, how the new plow work, et cetera. So Kyle, if you want to update the board?
So from Christmas Eve till yesterday, really, we've gone through almost all of our salt stock from last year. Which was, I estimated about 150 ton that we've used. We have a bunch in the trucks still and there's still a little bit in the salt farm. Those ice storms really go through a lot of salt, so let's hope we don't have many more of those. The new truck is running fine. I told Ed, it had to get back to Monroe under warranty. The bed would not lift with the load in it. The, apparently they had the plumbing for the hydraulic hoses reversed backwards. So we got that back about three weeks ago, now, I'd say two weeks ago, and it's running, running good.
So where are we standing with salt now, Kyle, as far as what do we have?
Well, we have this year's order still, so I just ordered 100 ton last Friday, should be getting all of it delivered sometime tomorrow and Wednesday, depending on scheduling of the deliveries. So that'll put us, after that 100 ton shows up, that'll put us at 480 ton left for the winter.
Well, when I hear the plow at night, I'm glad it's you. No, we appreciate what you do there in the wee hours there. That's all I have to report unless Kyle has something else.
That's it.
Okay, that's it, fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Harney. Finance, Mr. Zimba is not here this evening. But at the last meeting, we've talked about the possibility of putting a referendum question on the ballot come April for a property tax hike. The question was, how much would we be looking for at this time? I punched out some numbers on that. We'd looked at 20, 25, and 29% possibilities. So those are provided for you there in the packet. I apologize, the one doesn't seem to have tabulated properly. But in that second column, you go down, the first line under current numbers and then 20, 25, and 29% go on across. When I compared, I'm sorry, I'm on the second page comparing it to 400, 300, $250,000 homes. But we were talking about the last meeting, we got 20%, 29, or 25% and 29%. Based upon the projections that we've got for the tax levy that we did last month. If we raise that 20%, we'd be raising it to .875708. 25% would be .912196. And 29% would be 0.94138. So the difference, it would increase your property taxes by 100,000, 112,000, 154,000, and 188,000 respectively. On the next page, I plotted it out against actually four houses, 400, 300, 250, and 250K. Now that would be the market value, the EAV would be a third of that. And then I've taken it times the current rate, the 20% increase, the 25% increase, and a 29% increase. Those are the numbers I provided for you. Any comments, conversation?
So question, if you look just at, let's say Perrino here, if you look at 250,000 market, current was $605. And 25% would be $727. So in, just as an explanation, so if we went with the 25% as an example, then the tax would be $727 total for the year? On the Sleepy Hollow portion?
The Sleepy Hollow portion of 25% increase on a $250,000 home would be $757 a year. Or no?
727.
No, that's a 20%.
Okay, so what's the?
25.
Oh, I see, I see it. So 605 is the current and then 25% would be 757.
And then 757, right.
Okay, so in that. Right, exactly, Mark. That's what I wanted, $152.
$152 increase, right.
And then just when we go down there with the tax rates for neighboring municipalities. I know President Pickett, you mentioned some percentages a few minutes ago. If we looked at, well, just look at East Dundee, for example. What are, what are Sleepy Hollow's percent if we were to compare it against, say, East Dundee as an example? Is that on here?
Well, it's right above, it's right above it, isn't it, with the?
Okay, 8.9, okay, so at 25%, 8.909603.
Correct.
Okay, so that would be then compared to, again, just using East Dundee as an example, they're at 9.05.
Correct.
All right, thank you for the explanation.
And we're currently at .729 in some numbers, right?
.729757.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, that they also have pensions and other things added in there too, so their tax liability is still higher than us even with.
Well, West Dundee, well, correct, they do have fire and police in there with their pensions. And I believe they also include the garbage pickup in their taxes too. East Dundee does not have the fire protection, that's the East Dundee Fire Protection District. And that's not included in the East Dundee's numbers, the same as it's not included in Sleepy Hollows. We have Rutland Dundee.
They would have police pension in East Dundee, correct?
They do have a police pension in East Dundee, correct.
So is it fair to say even with these increases, proposed increases, our rate is still lower than the Dundee's?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Steve, was there an asterisk around Gilbert's?
I was kind of surprised that Gilbert's came in so low and then when I looked at it, the majority of Gilbert's is in Rutland Township, not Dundee Township. And Rutland Township's assessments are not as high as Dundee Township's assessments.
Oh, okay.
So you see them at 7.9 and every, you know, East and West Dundee were pushing nine. Carpenter'sville's pushing nine, We'rewood eight, I was just kind of curious as to why Gilbert's would be lower and that's the one thing that I did note. Gilbert's being in Rutland Township versus Dundee Township.
I mean, I guess it's, I don't know when we need to pull the trigger on this. I mean, I guess it's obvious that we need the 29% is what we really need to function as a village and prepare for our future. But considering we're still in the world, you know, in a pandemic and going to be there for a while and things are kind of iffy, I, I think we should ask for the minimum we need and I think at this point, 20 or 25% is probably the minimum we need to be solvent for the next few years.
I would agree with that.
I would agree.
What, when you look at?
It would increase the tax by $168,775.
I'm sorry, say again, Steve, I didn't.
So that would, if you went with a 20% increase at the levy that was imposed on us this past year, that would be about $168,000 extra a year to the budget.
So we need to go to 25% then is what I would, I guess I would, whenever we had to pull the trigger, I guess I'd pull it for 25 for now and then.
Yeah, with, I would agree with Joe that 25 is probably where we need to go, but the 29%, that figure was, why did we pick 29? That would give us 244,724? Or was it just a number, like can we go over 29% or was?
We can go over 29, Anthony. It's just, the last time we went out, we'd gone out three times before and the last time we went out at a third. Of what we've been asking for. And when we were talking about this the last couple of months, we said 30% and somebody said, you know, 29 sounds better than 30. So I threw 29 in there instead of 30.
All right, sounds good.
Mark, when do we need to pull the trigger on this?
Next meeting. It's, it's a deadline.
So we need to make a motion tonight to have you draft up the numbers at whatever we choose, so you can have it.
Yes, that would be very helpful.
Well.
I think we're prepared to do that tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
What's the consensus, 20 or 25 then?
25.
25.
Well, let's have a motion on one of them.
I like to make a motion that we, we, we increase the tax rate at a 25% level due to the fact that we need additional revenues to operate the village of Sleepy Hollow.
Second, Deatley.
Okay, moved by Perrino, seconded by Deatley to increase the property tax by 25% over to the current tax rate of .727. Point seven.
Two, nine, seven, five, seven.
There we go. Any more comments, questions, discussion?
And I think that when we, when this is done as a referendum, then we have an obligation to maybe establish a short, a small committee to come up with that, you know, if we don't do this, then we're going to lose services. Or by doing this, we can maintain services. So, and also in educating the residents that this is not on the entire tax bill, it's only on the Sleepy Hollow portion of your tax bill.
The referendum itself, and the ordinance that I'll present to you has to recite the effect on a home of 100,000 market value. From which someone could then, depending on the multiple, how much more valuable their property actually is, do the arithmetic. So that's, according to this, that'll show the increased tax on 100,000, for every 100,000 in value will be $66. So, you know, more homes in Sleepy Hollow are probably in the 250 to 350 range, I would think. So it's going to be the 180 kind of number up to maybe 200,000 or 200 extra tax effect per household.
Or I may add, that would be, work out to be about a Starbucks latte about every, once every other week, so.
There you go.
And I think we're pretty clear is that these numbers are not necessarily to add anything. This is basically to, to keep the status quo, to be able to pave roads, to keep the employees, to plow the streets.
Right.
We're not trying to increase, you know, increase anything.
And I think to anybody listening in, this isn't the first time the board has brought this up. This has been a process that started months and months ago. And we all agree, something has to be done financially for the village. We all realize it's, it's a bad time to do it, a difficult time with COVID and everything, but we just can't continue down the road. So the decision tonight was, was not made lightly. I think that needed to be said.
Agreed.
Well, and Steve kind of pointed out that this is actually, Ed, you're right, we've been talking about this for months. The, the board has been talking about this for years and years, and the finance came, put together some a lot of research and numbers through the future and what our costs were and where we're going, and, you know, we, to be honest, really, we, as Steve always said, kicked the can down the road, we, we were able to get a third of what we needed last time, and at that point, we were looking at, I mean, we, we had some serious discussions on the board, and Mark gave us a briefing about what it would take to dissolve the village or to annex and deluge, so. And if we want to keep what we have now, it's, it's kind of the, I mean, that's where we're at.
And, and I, and I think all, all municipalities, you know, had the, well, every municipality in the whole United States of America's been affected by the pandemic, so it's not just the fact that, you know, services and, and prices have gone up, it's the fact that revenue has been so depleted, um, with everyone, that in order to, uh, you know, maintain and, and continue, you know, these are important steps. I agree a hundred percent with, with, with Ed said, as, as the other trustees have mentioned as well. Hey, I'm the one that made the motion, I mean, I'm going to be paying the taxes as well, but, you know, in realizing that uh, we, we have a unique community that we want to maintain as a unique community, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Anthony.
I agree with all the points that are made, they're all very valid. Like I said, we've been talking about this and thinking about this for a long time, and, um, there's no longer kicking it down the road. We just have to, uh, do it and make it happen.
Okay, no further comments or discussion, uh, roll call then, Mr. Perrino.
Aye.
Mr. Deatley.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Merkel.
No.
Mr. Nimmick.
Aye.
We've got four affirmative votes and one negative, motion so passes. Mr. Schuster, you can draft the appropriate paperwork for the meeting of the ninth, eight, was it nineteenth?
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, water and sewer, Joe?
I believe we're still in the status quo, uh, although we have several projects need to be completed, but, you know, Kyle's been busy doing snow removal and the weather, so I don't know of anything new, Kyle, do you?
Uh, nothing new.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, uh, police and public safety, Mr. Deatley.
Uh, just, uh, you'll note that the chief, uh, included a couple of things in your packet there for your review. Uh, we did have some officers compete in the shop, or not compete, but participate in the shop for a cop, Shop with a Cop, uh, program, uh, over the holidays, and just, uh, want to, you know, give a shout out to the chief for, you know, the involvement in the community. It's a really good thing to see. Um, and then you'll see another couple of things in there that the chief included, um, as well as you can read at your leisure. Uh, chief, you have anything you need to add?
No, you did a great job with Shop with a Cop, and we're happy to do it.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all, President Pickett.
Well, I thank you, Mr. Deatley, uh, building is an environment, Mr. Merkel.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Merkel, building and zoning, Mr. Perrino.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Anthony, uh, old business, uh, vehicle sticker rates, we gonna stay the same, or are we going to raise those?
Um, I thought the discussion was that we had last week on it was that we were going to keep those the same.
Oh, it was the form that's supposed to be changed.
The form was going to be changed, yeah.
Okay. All right, that's taken care of, all right. Uh, the next item is, uh, the bluff situation. Mr. Miles is with us this evening in the audience, uh, we were, we're discussing this the last meeting. Uh, Mr. Miles asked that, uh, we, the village take sixty percent of the, uh, building permit bill, and the homeowners association would take forty percent. Mr. Zimba countered with a fifty-fifty proposal, and since it was not an action item on the agenda at the last meeting, we've got it back this evening. So what is the desire of the board this evening? I'm just, uh?
Has anything, has anything changed since our lengthy discussion at the last board meeting?
No, nothing has changed, the, the comment is certainly the same, that the paperwork should have been completed long before we had to go down and rezone the entire property at our expense. We're just asking the city to help us with the twelve hundred dollar bills and get the paperwork properly put together. That should have been done before we took over the property as a community.
So what is the board's desire, how do you like to handle this? Mr. Miles is here, he's asked for a sixty-forty, uh, cut on it?
I'll be fifty-fifty, I'll be having fifty-fifty, I just want to have a share of this bill.
I, I had questioned last time whether the amount that he was billed included Mr. Schuster's.
There was no charge from the attorney's.
Is that correct, Mr. Schuster?
I, I don't believe I've been involved in this at all.
No.
Okay.
What, what I don't understand is, and it may be that the minutes are wrong, but it says, "After lengthy discussion by all members of the board, it was the consensus of the trustees to decline any offer to split the cost bill to the bluff." So is that an error in our minutes, or?
That was the consensus of the, the minute, of the meeting last time.
Okay.
But it was not an action item, so for there is not evoked, there's no position, it was the consensus at that meeting at that time?
I believe it was the consensus of one person.
Well, before I, before I make a motion on this, uh, some discussion, the, uh, I'm assuming Mr. Miles is calling me out as, uh, being the person. Um, as I said at the previous meeting, if, if we were to approve this reduction, then I will get in touch with the other two residents that participated at the same meeting, and have them approach the board for the same, uh, percentage off. I, I don't want to make the motion quite yet, but, uh, I'm willing to make a motion if there's any other, or, or, let me ask you, I'm sorry, that from a procedural point, President Pickett, should I make the motion, and then we have discussion?
Yes.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion that, uh, we do not support, uh, any cost sharing, uh, for the fence at the bluffs.
My comment is that we'll be sharing, oh, sorry.
Do we have a second?
Second, Deatley.
Okay, moved by Perrino to deny any, uh, cost sharing of the invoice, seconded by Deatley. Comments, questions, and discussion, gentlemen?
I had a question for Mr. Schuster, what kind of precedent would this make, uh, mark, you know, for, for other people? You know, like, um, Anthony mentioned, the other two homeowners that were in on the same, uh, hearing. If, if we do it for one, do we have to do it for all, or?
I would say this, uh, each situation is probably a little different, uh, but to the extent that there's any similarities, obviously, uh, other folks are going to come in and say they have a situation just like the bluffs, and the same result should occur.
One of the additional comments I'd like to make is that, uh, in the agreement that we read at the last meeting, you know, all costs were, uh, because they're their own little entity, all costs for repairs and so forth are all handled by them. The fact that, uh, there may not have been, uh, information, uh, passed through, uh, you know, is, is disappointing, but unfortunately, it's not something that I believe the board needs to support financially. Thank you.
My, my comment is that we're comparing apples and oranges because we're not talking about my personal property, we're talking about community property, which is a whole area that's going to set off for the community to deal with, and not just my own personal house, uh, it covers, uh, the property of probably seven homeowners, uh, to put this fence down along Retention Basin, which was there as a safety, uh, precaution, and is needed to be replaced because the old one was rotted and falling down. So it's not the same as me going out and trying to get my driveway replaced, it's, uh, it's a community, not a personal.
As I mentioned, Mr. Mills, the last time I spoke in error about my own personal driveway, the fact that you have a community and a homeowners association, and you guys put money together to, to make improvements to your area of fifty-two homes, is why I am saying it's not something that the village can support. So please, uh, cease and desist in bringing up my driveway. I made a mistake.
I think this is, this is always a tough situation because we don't want to set precedent. Um, I don't want to have everyone come into the board meeting, um, expecting that the village is going to pay their portion of whatever fees may be involved with doing this, um, especially with our financial situation within the village. Um, I think that the bluffs has a, uh, agreement in place with their homeowners association information, and I think that, uh, we should stay with that, and, uh, we should not do a split on this.
Let me ask you a question, the impact, if you have fifty-some homes, is about twenty dollars a home?
Well, twenty dollars a home, we also had to raise, uh, special assessments, we had to put that fence in, so now, I don't deserve a special settlement to pay for the fence, but there was also, uh, a building promotion to be paid for, and then this bill was completely, I was surprised. Everybody, if you go back home and say, oh yeah, by the way, besides charging me three hundred dollars a person for the fences, now I'm going to owe three hundred and twenty, now I owe a hundred and twenty dollars a person to have to pay this, this bill.
President, I'd like to call the question.
Okay, uh, roll call, uh, Mr. Perrino.
Uh, we're voting, we're voting on the motion.
Voting on your motion not to ca, not to cost share with the bluffs.
Right, uh, aye.
Okay, Perrino is, uh, aye, uh, Deatley?
Aye.
Mr. Harney?
Aye.
Mr. Merkel?
Aye.
Mr. Nimmick?
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, not to share, cost sharing with the bluffs, no negative votes.
Listen, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Sure thing, sure thing, Mr. Miles. Okay, uh, any other old business to come before the board? No other old business, any new business to come before the board?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, roll call, Mr. Merkel, aye, Mr. Nimmick?
Aye.
Mr. Deatley?
Aye.
Mr. Harney?
Aye.
Mr. Perrino?
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes, we are adjourned, we will see you all on January nineteenth, not the eighteenth.
Yep, correct.
Yep. To, Tuesday night.
Okay. Thank you all, drive safely.
Good night.
Night.
All right.